Now, I'll call this special meeting of Jacksonville City Council to order. Uh, council, you've been given a copy of the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting. I would entertain a motion as time.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that you, uh, council would add a closed session for personnel, please.
Okay. So we had a motion?
So, second.
Any discussion? Here are none on paper, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On post. So we'll go right to the, uh, the topics for tonight. Do you have any questions?
First of all, Mayor and Council, this is probably the first time that we have met in this conference room in two years. It's nice to know that society is getting back to some semblance of normality. And of course, tonight, we're gonna begin, or continue, our marathon journey on the budget. What we'd like to do this evening is cover a number of topics. While the agenda is fairly full, Gail and I have promised that we will take less than ten minutes while Wally is responsible for the next three hours after. The first thing we'd like to do is just review with you and update you on the, on the budget schedule. Obviously, tonight, we're at the twenty-ninth. We're gonna cover fuel, employee compensation challenges, CIP, revenue projections, and the one that several of you, especially Mr. Thomas, has been waiting for, and that's the revaluation tax neutral rate. He told me several weeks ago that he had written in a secret envelope, sealed secret envelope, what he thought the neutral rate would be. So he will tie, he will open that tonight, and we will see how close to accurate he is. Next week, we will begin to talk about the water and sewer rate model. We'll talk about compensation step plans for both police and fire. We will have documentation that Fire Chief Tallman will give, and also the Director of Public Safety, Mike Mera, will give. We'll talk about the COLA for general employees and department budgets. And then you can see that the rest of the schedule is really about the department budgets. I will tell you, as you go through your budget book, that other than the joy of being educated, there really is very little in your budget books this year. Why? When we asked the department directors to work this year on the budget, we made it very clear, we had one priority and one priority only, and that was wages. And we're gonna talk a little bit tonight about the challenges that we face on hiring good employees. You will also see that there's a public hearing scheduled for April nineteenth. Now, that's not a public hearing where we have a final budget. It's a public hearing where anyone can come and talk to you as the elected officials on what they would like to see or what their priorities are. That particular meeting, both the fifth and the nineteenth of April, will be back in the full city council chambers. But all of our other workshop types will be here in this room, if that is acceptable to you. You can also see that we're projecting a budget adoption by May eighteenth, or possibly Let's talk a second about fuel. Historically, or the last decade, we have budgeted three dollars and fifteen cents for unleaded gas, and we've been able to purchase it between two and two dollars. We have been very blessed. The three dollars and fifteen cent number came because, at one point in time, you will remember, about ten years ago, the price of gas at the pump was three dollars sixty-nine cents. And at that time, you as a council, or your predecessors as a council, set the policy that we would budget at the highest number, rather than to have to chase or fluctuate with fuel every year. You'll also recall that the budget for diesel is three dollars and forty-five cents, and historically, we have purchased it at two dollars and thirty cents. Well, unfortunately, history has changed. If you look at the FY twenty-two fuel usage, you can see the gallons, and you can see the price, and you can see what we put in the budget. We put in the budget a little over one and a half million dollars. You know, people, many people are surprised when I tell them, as we talk, or Ron talks to groups, that we spend about a million and a half dollars a year in fuel, or that we consume almost a half a million gallons a year in fuel. Well, remember, everything we do. While, sure, with my F, with my Ford F-150, I may only spend, pick a number, a thousand gallons a year, the city, with all the rolling stock and everything we do, we're almost a half a million gallons of fuel a year. Here's a little, I think, shocking as to what we're facing. You can see the month and year, you can see the price. Now, these are the actual prices we paid. And you will notice that it began to climb, and in March, unleaded, we actually bought it, not across the street at the commercial rate, but at our discount rate of twelve thousand gallons without the taxes, we paid three dollars and fifty-five cents a gallon. And remember, we only budgeted three fifteen a gallon. You can also see for diesel, four dollars and thirty-six cents. Now, at the pump across the street, the numbers have come back down. I believe that I'm correct. Mr. Massey is responsible every day for filling John and me in at ten, two, and four with what the, the prices are across the street. So, Mr. Massey, tell me what the pump prices were for unleaded this afternoon.
Three eighty-four.
Three eighty-four. Did you happen to know this diesel?
No, I did not.
Okay, I believe it was, uh, almost five dollars, I think it was four ninety-nine. But again, we don't buy at the pump. These are the actual prices that we have just paid. Here are some options. Now, this is for unleaded gas. Remember, we currently budget three dollars and fifteen cents. If you take the gallons and you multiply that times the price, you get the expense on the right. It's really, you know, who has the crystal ball? Now, if NC State ladies had won last night, I would ask Mr. Warden, because obviously, he would've had the crystal ball. But, Mr. Pitner, your Duke Blue Devils are gonna be playing John's Tar Heels on Saturday, I think it is, so I'm gonna let you rub the crystal ball. What number do you think we should be budgeting for next year?
You mean in terms of the spread between the game?
I thought in your case, you, you said that there wasn't a spread, it was already, the game was fixed.
It's a crystal ball.
It's a crystal ball. Dr. Washington, you got a guess?
I would say five.
Let's look at diesel. Now, remember, we are paying, what we, what we budgeted this year isn't even on this chart, 'cause you budgeted three dollars and forty-five cents. Every nickel of diesel cost us ten thousand dollars a year. Every nickel of unleaded cost us eleven thousand dollars a year. So for every nickel, you, you're talking about twenty, almost twenty-two thousand dollars. Let me show you what Ed is recommending. As you know, Ed Richards is our fleet manager. Ed doesn't see the prices continuing, he hopes they're gonna stabilize. So what he is recommending is that we go with the current highest price. Why? Because that's the most conservative thing. Now, we certainly hope that what Dr. Washington said, that we, we never face that. So what we're recommending in the budget is three fifty-five, up from three dollars and fifteen cents. And for diesel, we go to three ninety, that is up from three forty-five. What's the consequence? Hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. That, that's the consequence.
There goes your name tag. Everybody else can get paper ones, we can sell these.
Let me tell you the, the total consequence. Four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You remember why?
Savings that we give up.
The savings that we have built, the, the price we have built in the budget versus what we've actually had to pay, has returned to the fund balance every year between two and four hundred thousand dollars. Now, hopefully, whatever is causing, everybody has an opinion as what's causing the gas issues, but hopefully, these are not numbers that you are going to actually have to pay. And we hope and pray, literally, that we don't see numbers higher than this. But as we put together the budget, here's what we're recommending, that we put in the budget an increase of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand. But also remember, fleet charges all of the departments a fourteen percent overhead, because fleet is not a department that is funded by the general fund. It is a department that is funded by every department from every fund. So what you'd actually do is put in there fourteen percent overhead, and the final increase is roughly two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Not asking you to make a final decision tonight, we're just showing you information on what we're struggling with as we work on the budget. Any questions or thoughts?
Say, we'll go ahead and put that in concrete, and one last thing for them to have to come back to us on.
Why would it change? I don't see, I don't see the market changing that much.
Well, if you're comfortable, then we will consider no official votes, but if you're comfortable as a consensus, then that's what we will do.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's talk about some quick budget challenges. Funding inflation, the step plan for police, the step plan for fire, mayor and council directors. Let's talk about inflation. We are facing, as a nation, the highest inflation rate in more than a week. You can put in the number of years you want. FY twenty-one, I'm sorry, calendar year twenty-one ended at the official regional adjusted rate of five point one percent. Every one percent of inflation relative to wages costs the city three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Two hundred and forty of that comes out of the general fund, the other seventy thousand comes out of various funds. The police step plan needs to be updated. You will hear next week, the chief talk about his challenges of not just hiring people, but keeping them. We estimate that increase is four hundred thousand dollars. T will tell you, I'm sorry, Chief Tallman will tell you, that the fire step plan is losing firefighters left and right because of higher pay. To address those things, we project somewhere around three hundred thousand. Other mayor and council directives to be determined. The bottom line is that we're gonna give you a base budget that does not include any of those things, but we will work with you to find a solution on how you fund those things. That's our responsibility as your management team. It will require some, what I would call unpleasant decisions by a lot of people on both sides, both on the staff side and on your side. But we are looking at a challenge of between a million and two point five million dollars. We will find a way. Now, talk about finding a way. Wally Hanson is gonna spend the next, between five and eighty minutes, giving you an update on the capital improvement plan. Is anybody hot?
Yes.
Can we open the doors? And Ron, can you see if you can adjust the... I know I went through a lot of hot air, and that's why you said you were hot. Wally, and also, you, you know Randa, Randa has worked hard on the CIP, so I'm gonna ask the two of you to come up, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We appreciate the opportunity to bring to you the proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty-three through fiscal year thirty-two. As you know, we went several years ago to a ten-year capital improvement plan to comply with the state law regarding system development fees and being able to charge system development fees for new development. So with that, I apologize, I've got the better part of probably thirty slides here, so I'll try not to spend a lot of time on all of them. I know that you've seen some of these before, but it's a very important document, and it is adopted with your budget annually, and, but, the first year is the only year that is actually funded. So when we talk about all of the projects in the capital improvement plan over the next ten years, we're really focused on the next year, which is fiscal year twenty-three, and that being funded. So again, the, the capital improvement plan is a ten-year planning document that identifies projects that the city plans to construct during that timeframe. It prioritizes those projects typically by year. It breaks it up over different funding sources. We try to identify the expenditures, and we do our best to estimate what those projects are going to cost the city. And then we use that to evaluate our water and sewer rate model, or plug that into our water and sewer rate model to evaluate our rates, and then we do the same thing for our system development fees. So we use it for financial planning, and, and again, we're trying to assign those expenditures in the year that we expect to expend those. And we talked about, well, Dr. Woodruff talked about crystal balls, and, you know, we talk about development and what the city is going to do over the course of the next ten years. Some of this we're using is based on actual developers that we've talked to, plans that they may have, but in many cases, you know, those projects may not move forward, or they may for, may move forward all at once. So it gets very hard to look at our crystal ball and say when specific projects may be necessary. And then, again, it has accountability because we use your master plans that you've adopted for various departments, whether that be recreation and parks, or that be a water master plan, or a wastewater master plan that's been developed for the city, and we use those documents to plan our capital improvement projects. With that, a capital improvement project is a project that typically takes at least twelve months to complete, has a useful life of five years, and a cost that exceeds fifty thousand dollars. We all know that you can't buy a car anymore for fifty thousand dollars, but our capital improvement plan does not include purchases such as fire apparatus, or vehicles, or computers, or anything like that. It is focused on construction. So with that construction, we have everything from new construction to renovation, such as a Jackie Mead, which is both new construction and renovation. We do replacement of existing infrastructure, rehabilitation of streets where we mill and then pave, and then we have improvement projects where we may go add something to a park or improve a park, and then we have projects that are strictly related to growth. Those are typically, you know, water and sewer type projects where we plan for future So in the ten-year capital improvement plan, we have a total of a hundred and thirty-seven projects. That should've gone out to you for draft review. And what I'll point out is, you see, the bulk of those projects are in public services. The reason for that is, that's where all of your water, sewer, stormwater, streets, sidewalks, even general replacements like roofs or parking lot paving, public services collects all of those, because typically, engineering is the one that administers those projects. And then we do have, where we have parks improvements, or, or specific things related to different departments do fall under those individual departments. This is the funding for those projects broken out. So you can see that the water and sewer fund has the bulk, and then we have some revenue bonds at a much smaller amount, and then, of course, grants, which was very helpful, and the grants is what actually cut into some of the revenue bonds, so the twenty million dollars that Councilman Zara was able to bring, the city significantly cut into that. And then, of course, the rest are broken out, and you can see the general fund portions and capital reserve. Tonight, as I said, we kinda talk about and focus on the FY twenty-three capital improvement plan and those projects, primarily because those are the ones that are funded in the budget. While the entire document is important for planning purposes and for helping us evaluate our rates and, and our system development fees, again, it's only the first year that is really funded. So you'll see that, again, the bulk of those projects are in public services. What I will say about the projects that you see there is, many of these, not just in public services, but in other departments as well, are rollover projects. Those are projects that we're currently working on that already have funding. So when we get into these, although you see twenty-four projects, what we talk about tonight will be a much smaller number, because many of those are carryover projects where we're not asking for or anticipating new funding at this time. So tonight, I'll, I'll focus on a departmental summary of each of the, of the projects, and then ongoing programs. Many of our projects, especially in the public services area, are what we call ongoing programs, and I'll talk about those a little bit more, but one that everybody's probably most familiar with is our street rehabilitation program. We do that annually. So that is a reoccurring program throughout the full ten years, so if you pull up our, our document, you'll see ten street projects, ten sidewalk projects. So those are kind of our own, ongoing programs, and then we'll talk about the new projects for FY twenty-three.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Two things, I saw something for Onzeal County.
Yes, sir.
And the other thing is, maybe Gil can refresh our, my memory at least, capital reserve fund. What do you use that for?
Um, the bulk of the money that's in there was set aside, the four cents, for the cap, uh, council initiatives.
Okay.
Um, most of those original projects that were on that list are done, but we use it to fund whatever capital projects are coming down the pike.
Does it have a, a balance that's uncommitted?
Um, yes, but I don't know what it is, off the top of my head.
And for Onzeal County, I don't remember which project it is, but there's a project that is a joint project between the city and the county, and Onzeal County has a small contribution to that project. I don't remember which project.
Business Center.
The Welcome Center.
Business Center.
Thank you. So getting into our individual departments, the first one is community improvement. We have one project for community improvement. It's actually Country Club Villas, and this is a project that we started last year, and we've put in roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I think that funding source is Community Block Grant. And, um, so the, the idea is that we're making paving, stormwater, and aesthetic improvements in Country Club Villas using that funding. And then, while I'm here, I'll go ahead and talk about it. You can see we're planning to, the planning was kind of done in, actually, some of it was done in FY twenty-two, and then we'll do some more in FY twenty-three, and then the construction will be spread out over twenty, FY twenty-three and twenty-four. But when you see a total cost, that is the total cost for the project.
Is this the old Myrtle Wood?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
And then for public safety, we have six total CIP projects, but only one that is new or ongoing for FY twenty-three, and that is Fire Station Number Four. We actually had a meeting with the architect for this project today, but as you're well aware, we're looking at moving to a new Fire Station Four with the cell of the existing Fire Station Four to Onzeal County. And part of inciting this, we're looking at land that currently, the city currently owns along Marketplace Drive, which is the new road between the Public Shopping Center and Gateway North, and what we're planning for is having access onto Marketplace where we can get out to either Gateway North or Western Boulevard currently, and then in the future, having access to Jacksonville Parkway. So I think that'll be a good site.
Is that land figured into that cost there?
It is, currently. That's the, the best guess that we have right now.
It's our land.
And it's our, it is, oh, I'm sorry, land. It's our land. It is not, that is not figured in. But the cell is figured into the funding portion. I'm sorry, I misunderstood that. Under public services project, you can see, again, that this is the bulk of the projects in the capital improvement plan, but it's broken out over multiple types of projects, all with separate funding sources. And you can see, of the twenty-six projects, eighteen of those are projects that you've already seen that we are currently working on. Those include Ellis Pump Station, which I believe you awarded at your, your council meeting last week, and then those include, like, the Western Regional System that we've been working on. So there's, most of those projects are rollover projects. Matter of fact, we only have four new projects that have additional funding this year for FY twenty-three, and then we have four of our reoccurring programs, and I'll, I'll kinda walk through each of those programs. So the first one we have is our Inflow and Infiltration Program, and this is to eliminate stormwater and groundwater from getting into our sewer system, which uses valuable capacity and in addition, we have to treat. So this program is set up on three years reoccurring, the first year's design, and the next two years are really construction. So you would see that repeat throughout the ten-year program. The water and sewer rehab projects, these are projects where we go into neighborhoods and replace deteriorating water and sewer lines. Many times, you'll see these, while it's a reoccurring program, we do break those out from time to time into individual projects, depending on the size. One that we're currently working on is actually Coal Drive, and then one that I'll talk to you about in a minute is Brookview and Dewitt, so those will be coming up. And then the street rehabilitation program, we do coordinate our water and sewer program with our street rehabilitation, because obviously, it doesn't do us any good to go in and pave a street that has failing infrastructure underneath. And in many of our streets, especially the ones where you see dips or low areas in the street, that's not necessarily because the pavement failed, that's because the utilities underneath have failed, and that's a much larger project, project than just going in and milling and resurfacing our streets. And you will, we did bid a, we did bid a street project out and got bids back, unfortunately. We don't believe that we'll be able to award those, so we will be, be bringing you back, bringing you that to evaluate and possibly reject those, and then we'll rebid it. But the prices ranged from one and a half million dollars for that project to over two million. So we'll, you'll be looking at it, you're, probably your next meeting. And then also, as a ongoing program, our pedestrian improvements, this can be anything from ADA accommodations, where we go in and change out handicap ramps, or add handicap ramps for crosswalks, to new sidewalks or trails. And we program roughly about a hundred thousand dollars a year for pedestrian improvements. And then we have a well rehabilitation program, and this looks at wells that were constructed in the sixties and seventies. We currently have about twenty of those, and in many cases, we're going in and evaluating the well, not just the wellhouse. So we would pull that well, pull the pumps, camera the well, evaluate, see if that well is viable for lining or rehabilitation, or do we just continue to use it? And then we would switch out any controls that are necessary, and then deal with the building. But as you can imagine, even though these are small buildings, in many cases block, we deal with either asbestos or lead-based paint.
How do you zero in on the condition of the well?
I'm sorry?
How do you zero in on the condition of the well?
We, we bring in a, we bring in a well driller that has the equipment to actually pull the column pipe and pump out of the well, and then they can go in and literally camera it foot by foot, and they will identify any defects that we may have. So, and then, there are...
What, what leads you to a defect? Decreased pumping rates, or what?
No, typically, well, many of them now are not...
How do you zero in on the condition of the well?
We we bring in a, we bring in a well driller that has the equipment to actually pull the column pipe and pump out of the well. And then they can go in and literally camera it foot by foot, and they will identify any defects that we may have. So and then there are.
What what leads you to a defect, decreased pumping rates or what?
No, typically, well, many of them now are not pumping at what they were, which is not uncommon. But you can have a screen that's failed, and you have gravel pack intrusion, you know, just materials degrade over time. So our first new project that has money in it for is a sewer replacement along Mill Ave. We have several areas in Mill Avenue that are failing. So we will go in, dig up that sewer, replace it, replace some of the manholes that are along with that. I believe they're brick manholes in this area. And then we will replace the surfaces to a new cleanout for the homes. And then evaluate the water while we're there. And when we're completely finished, we'll come back and resurface Mill Avenue.
Mill Avenue downtown was some of the original.
Yes, sir.
Infrastructure.
And it's clay.
Okay, clay pipe?
Yes, sir. Another new project is Georgetown Stormwater. This picture was actually taken during Hurricane Florence. And it's hard to see, but kind of off the side, there's actually a car that is completely flooded out. So we need to go in and replace the culverts. This is between the McDonald's on Georgetown Road and the property that First Baptist Church owns. It's actually kind of at the back of First Baptist Church's property. And it's known as Collins Branch. So we would.
Is that right near Seagars?
I'm sorry?
That near the fence company?
Yes.
Okay.
It sure is, it's right near Seagars Fence. So we would come in, replace those pipes, upsize them, and then do any stream restoration work that's necessary. And I don't know if you'll remember, but we, along that same creek, we just recently went in and did Leonard Street. So that is the same creek that comes out right behind Tide Line. We have piping improvements at L T S. This is actually a section of lateral that we have. All of the expansion area was put in above ground. And I think at the time, it was probably a cost-saving and rapid way to get the infrastructure in. The problem is now that it's got some age on it with maintenance activities, where we go and mow, and while you can see that one in many cases, it's hard to see because the grass grows right over it. You know, we create some of our own damage, but we also have freeze thaw activities that happen out there. And they'll pull apart because that's just two-inch, the one you're seeing there is just a two-inch H G P E pipe laying on the ground with a half-inch riser coming out of it. So this project would go in and start bearing those so that we have less damage to them. And those are starting to really become a problem. And then we have the FY twenty-three Infrastructure Rehabilitation. This includes Brookview, DeWitt, and East Bay Shore. And the picture that you see is actually from Brookview yesterday. So this is a project that we really need to get started on. Matter of fact, it may be one that you see us bring a budget amendment request to you to try to get started on some of that this year. And we're looking at replacing probably five to six hundred feet of sewer line. The problem is it's twelve-inch and it is eleven feet in the ground. So this is not going to be an easy or cheap project. And the manholes that are out there are block, they're manhole blocks. So it's actually a curved block. So we'll replace those manholes while we're there. And one last comment to this, one thing, one thing that we've been worried about and having to deal with is the Decatur Pump Station, which serves a larger area, actually pumped through this system to our Brookview Pump Station. We just recently had a project, just completed a project that eliminated that pump station and put it into gravity sewer that flows behind Williams Farm and goes to a gravity outfall that still goes to Brookview Pump Station. So the good news is we have taken a lot of flow off of this line. And that was part of the challenge with being able to move forward is figuring out how to deal with that flow and maintain that flow as we were making these repairs. And our plan is to do much the same as we did along Seminole and Sioux. For anybody that went by that project, it'll be very similar type construction. And then when we're finished, we'll come through and we will repave. And right now, what we're looking at is trying to repave that entire circle of Brookview, that semicircle from Decatur to Decatur.
Is that caused by the residents, some of the residents there in that neighborhood? Some of the Carolina fans, I think.
But I will say that second one, that kind of looks like a little mound, because it is a little mound, has a steel plate over it because it's failing. And it's steel plate with rock on top of it. And it is literally, to Mr. Popkin's credit, it is at his driveway, and he has been very patient with us.
So how does that work for some of those people that have to get access to their houses? I mean.
We will, we will figure out how to maintain access. We may have some time periods where they won't have access. Typically, what we found is it works really well to do it during the day when people are at work versus at night. And what we did for Sioux and Seminole is we just, we figured out where the contractor would be working, and our construction inspector actually went and made contact, individual contact with those homeowners. And we had, you know, an example in Seminole and Sioux, we had a lady that lived on Seminole that was pregnant and due any day. So, you know, she let us know upfront, so we made sure that she always had access out of her driveway. So we we were very closely with the neighbors as we do that, because we realize it is disruptive.
It was a mess for a while.
It was.
How long did that project take?
It took us, it probably took us the better part of two months or three months to get it where we weren't blocking the road completely.
Is that belly projecting for this or or longer?
Probably longer because it's deeper. It's not as long, but it's deeper. And am I right on the timeline? Because I know you went through there more than I did. Was that longer than that?
It was longer than that.
It was longer, it was longer than three months. It was probably six months or so.
Well, I was thinking that we had the road open before it was.
Well, yeah, but but until you paved it, I, you know, I guess be safe from from construction beginning to the paving, final paving was at least six months.
Okay.
And you're gonna end up letting it set for.
For a while, yes. And we do, that's a great segue. We do try to, when we do a project like this, if we've had to make a repair, what we try to do before we go back and repave the street is let it sit for a little while to make sure that there's no settlement around the pipe or anything like that, to make sure that we've got our compaction where it should be. And that's the, if you remember when we did Henderson Drive, that's the same process we did along Henderson Drive.
Well, a question.
Yes, sir.
We have a couple of areas like that on Kit Drive.
Yes, sir.
And I'm wondering if it's the same type of failure, or do you know?
The ones on, the ones on Kit Drive, the Kit Drive sewer is much shallower. And the ones that we had there were actually just small repairs that we made. And our, we went through a period of time where we had to advertise or bid out a patching contractor to do the utility patches. And that contractor is actually out working now. So it's just, I I'll find out where Kit Drive is. We we supply the list of patches for the contractor, and we basically give him a release of a week's worth at a time. So I'll see where Kit Drive is on that list. Moving to Recreation and Parks Department, there's five projects in Parks and Recreation. And three of those are currently in progress. We have one that's kind of an ongoing program and then one that has new money associated with that. The Sturgeon City Boardwalk is, it's a mix between a project and an ongoing program. Since FY nineteen, we've added fifteen thousand dollars a year to deal with a rotted and deteriorated boardwalk. And we're proposing to continue that through FY twenty-five. So that's the total cost of the forty-five thousand. And this year, you would only see fifteen thousand. And then we have the recreation facility at Williamsburg. And as you're well aware, the city purchased land for recreation behind Williamsburg. This is for the installation of the culverts so that we comply with the current jurisdictional determination that we have in place for the wetlands and the wetland crossing. And I believe that money, while it says new money, I believe that money is actually already in there. But it's a new, it's a new project to the Capital Improvement Plan, so I included it because it wasn't in last year's Capital Improvement Plan. Under Transportation Services, there's four projects. I believe of those four, we have one program and only one new project. The new project is the Jacksonville Station Phase Two. This is, this will be located across East Thompson from where the new facility is. It will be grant-funded. It will include a fueling station and overflow bus parking along with a vehicle wash facility. And then as an ongoing joint effort between the General Fund and the Water and Sewer Fund, we have a hundred thousand dollars for fiber installation. That program is designed to beef up our fiber system throughout the city. And the reason that Water and Sewer also contributes to that project is because a lot of our wells and lift stations and water tanks communicate back to the water plant using that system. So it's important to us to have that system in place.
Excuse me, what are you doing with Jacksonville Station?
The, this is a project proposed for the, it's city-owned property on the City Hall side of East Thompson Street. It's right, yes, and it's right in front of our seventeen water tank. So they're proposing to put in a a fueling station for the buses so they don't have to come all the way across town, a vehicle wash facility. And then it does have overflow bus parking. And I believe it would be gated too, if I remember right. And the access would be off of East Thompson. And this one is grant-funded. Is it a hundred percent grant-funded? I don't, I can't.
We'll use the land match. I mean, that's the, that's the plan right now. We've got F T A funds left from the Jacksonville Station project. And we've also got F T A cares funding that could be used. So we hope that, you know, just the local match will be satisfied with the value of the land.
What about the street across from East Thompson? The why, the realignment of that by the Kentucky Fried Chicken?
The realignment is currently, it is a current project that's in design.
Okay.
So that that is separate from this project.
And it's grant-funded too, isn't it?
It is, yes, sir. And and we're trying to coordinate the repaving of Market Street because East Thompson turns into Market as you wrap around toward Belfort. We are trying to incorporate our project with their project also.
And the fueling station will be only for the buses?
No, I don't think so.
No, it'll be on the city system. It'll be a second location, give us more capacity, especially during hurricanes. And that when you need to have more holding capacity between resupply.
And then I already talked about the the fiber portion. But what, and the only thing I'd say about the importance of our fiber system is the, in the last two years, we've lost the, the water plant has gone down probably a half dozen times. And of that, three or four of them have been from something happening to our fiber system. You know, somebody digs into it accidentally or, because one of the main feeds for that plant actually comes along Western Boulevard and is direct buried. So we do have, now we have a redundant way in from Gun Branch Road, but that has caused us a lot of problems, so.
Is there any chance of piggybacking on, what is it, the company, Metro Name?
Metro Net?
Yes.
We've, they're primarily working in neighborhoods right now. We have worked with them and looked at where they're going and what they're proposing. And Anthony would be much better to speak to that, but I don't think we've found any real opportunities yet.
Every every time they come in with another section that they're getting ready to construct, we look at what our needs are in that area. In some cases, we might have gaps for that. We might ask them to put in conduit, and then we can pull fiber later on. But every, you know, they're they're coming in with kind of subdivision packages. So what we see is a piece at a time and that. But we do review it in in relation to our fiber master plan.
Very good, very good. Speaking about digging into things, I know this doesn't have anything to do with, but the natural gas line that was being installed along Gun Branch Road, what happened to all that? I know it looks like it's been abandoned.
It it does, and it's funny, I do not know what's happened there, but I also noticed that they were working out near L T S along Meadow, Fire Tower Road. And the same thing's happened there. The the line's just sitting there, part of it's installed, part of it's sitting, you know, beside the road. So we'll, we'll see if we can find a contact to ask. I I can't answer, I'm not sure what happened there. But I noticed in both locations, they've kind of stopped working.
I believe it was supposed to belong to North Carolina Natural, Natural Gas.
It's Piedmont, Piedmont now now belongs to Duke. There's a subsidiary of Duke.
So again, we have a hundred and thirty-seven total projects in the Capital Improvement Plan. You know, the thing again that I'll point out is only the next year is funded. But the rest of the projects are important because that's what we use to evaluate our rates and and look at the projects that we'll need in the future. And the Water and Sewer portion of the Capital Improvement Plan has been submitted and presented to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee at their last meeting. And I did want to share with you that they did support the Water and Sewer projects that are proposed. So moving forward, we have given you a draft copy. If there's anything that you would like to see added or have questions on or have concerns with, we will be happy to look at those, get those revisions made. Sabrina from Finance is planning to do a Water and Sewer Rate Model Discussion with you at your April fifth workshop meeting. And then as every year, the Capital Improvement Plan will be adopted as part of the budget.
Richard, how are we handling the anticipation of the funds we're gonna get from the land sale for the, I call it the piers, it's no longer piers, but.
One place.
One place.
One place and the land from the property on Gateway North. What are we, what are, how are we budgeting in anticipation?
Just a minute after, Randa and Wally.
Their question was a little bit later in the presentation.
But I'll show you that.
Okay.
As soon as I get close to my.
I'll be patient.
And while Randa did not say anything, she did probably ninety percent of the work. She deserves the credit.
She did, absolutely.
Good job on teaching them what to say.
Mr. Bidner, to to answer your question, when the sale of the fire station is completed, and my understanding is they're still in due diligence.
Yes, sir. We, no documents.
No documents yet. But when that million-dollar sale comes through, that money will go back into funding the fire station. So that that is a correct payment.
So that'll knock off some of that four that was.
That's correct.
Included in there, included in that four as a funding source.
When we close on one place, which is now getting very close, because they're in the process of finishing their due diligence. They asked Mr. Carter the other day if he knew of any abandoned wells, any fuel spills on the site, any water or sewer going through. They had a list, two pages of things that they wanted to know. through, they had a list, two pages of things that they wanted to know. And John just came in and said, is it all right if I say no to all of these? And I said, as far as I'm concerned, say no. When that one million occurs, that money will go to offset the two point four million dollar purchase of recreation land. So you will then have that money reimbursed to your general fund. When the properties that you're selling to Mr. Maids and others for the two apartment complexes, those will come through, one of them we expect to come through probably January or February of twenty-three, so that'll be part of this budget. That money likewise will go back into offsetting the purchase of the two point four million dollar, uh, recreation land. The other project is probably a year further out. And when that money comes through, then it will be up to council to decide how you want to appropriate that money. So let me walk through real quickly. The sale of one place will go towards the recreation land. The sale of the apartment property land will go to the sale of the recreation land. So what you're doing is basically trading, and I'm gonna use round numbers, twenty-six acres in order to buy four hundred acres. That's the game plan, that's what y'all have voted on, I believe that all is gonna happen. On the fire station, the one million dollars from the county will go to the fire station. Mr. Carter, is that your memory?
Yes, sir.
Now, most importantly, Ms. Maids, is that your memory?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's good. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. We have two quick items, I don't think this is gonna take that long, I'd like to ask Gail if she will come up and join me. Every year as we put together the budget, there are assumptions that we make. Our philosophy and your philosophy has always been be conservative. It's easier to wind up finding things where rosier than you thought. It's never a good idea to come back to y'all with the word oops. So as we put together the budget for twenty-three, the property tax revenue is based upon the F Y twenty-two collections. Council initiatives will remain at their current level of one point four million dollars. No change in the distribution formula for sales tax. Remember, the county has to make a determination of change by the end of March of every year. April, April, okay. Only missed about a month.
Could, would we, uh, you know, one time they told us that they didn't change anything, that we didn't ask them. Can we just send a, just to, just to remind them that there were still one assumption, can we just send a, a letter that'll, that, uh, say, hey, we'd like to, like to have y'all change the sales tax distribution, which they'll ignore, but that's okay.
We can do that.
Send it electronically, save the stamp.
Yeah. Hate to waste a stamp, but anyway.
We can certainly do that.
Yeah, let's, let's just remind them.
The other assumption is that the city growth has been modest, and it has been. We've had less than fifteen single family homes permitted this year. Water and sewer rates are gonna increase by two point two five, that's our assumption. You'll see the model next week, you'll be talking about that. Health insurance premiums will increase by one percent, that's already been approved by you. Good news here, the eight hundred megahertz payment, which comes out of the four cent fund, you'll have the final payment. And then that will free up almost four hundred thousand dollars. Another assumption, the general fund will continue to subsidize the solid waste fund because even though we have fees, it is the residential, you still put in about one point six to one point eight million dollars a year in general fund subsidy. There'll be no change, I'm sorry?
Would that go up based on, uh, fuel costs? Cause I know they probably use quite a bit of the fuel.
Yes, sir, that will. No change to recycling fees except the dumpster rental, we talked with y'all about that a couple of weeks ago. The assumptions that you've just conferred, uh, were these for fuel. The three-year equipment replacement plan will be built into the base budget. And I will remind you that as we put together the ERP, as we call it, our goal is expenditure like this. It's not what we used to have of, oh, we gotta buy four garbage trucks this year and a fire truck, and then next year all you have to do is buy police cars. We have a set amount that we budget every year, we try to stay within that, and that has been very successful since we started that a half dozen years ago. The DIX Crisis Center is still funded at a hundred thousand. The Joe Ed funding has been removed from the budget for various reasons from which Carter's talked about. At a future time, after you adopt the budget, we will bring back to you a budget amendment. That way, uh, we just don't have some conflicts, we're, we're certainly, you're, in adopting the budget this way, you're certainly not saying that you don't support Joe Ed. What you're saying is we're staying within the guidance of your city attorney, and you'll come back and amend the budget for those things.
What's our share of the funding for Joe Ed?
It is thirty thousand dollars a year operating and thirty thousand dollars a year for their capital, and I believe that this would be the third year.
Second. I think it's the second.
The second, the second year.
Second on the capital.
Second of your five-year pledge on capital. But that's not in your budget, you will address that at a later time.
I guess my question really was, what percent is that of their budget? In other words, how much is the county paying?
Well, we don't know what the county's gonna do this next year. They, they did not commit to the capital program.
They, they have, in the, I think their last, their last year or the current year, they, they did put in a hundred thousand, as I recall. Was their portion, but that's down from what they were doing, they were doing about two hundred thousand.
Yes, sir.
The base budget assumes no change to the step plans, but we are gonna have to address the step plan. The general fund will continue with the two hundred thousand dollar contingency. Powell Bill will be the only funding source for paving. We remind you though, that we have the million dollars that we're working on that Senator Lozera made possible, although you do have to share through an indirect way monies with the YMCA and with Sturgeon City. Department issues, you will only face one. Normally you have a list. I have either approved the minor ones or denied the major ones. There's no need for you to see things in this budget that you have no chance to find. The only DI that you will see is for the ladder truck. We have a one million dollar grant application in. If that grant application is not approved, then you will not be asked to buy the ladder truck. Remember, the ladder truck is about.
One point seven.
One point seven million. That does not include new axes, it does include a new ladder. Mr. Massey does not allow the fire department to buy new axes. And the last assumption is what we've always done, you balance the budget using your general fund savings account. Parkwood Regional is funded by the federal and state grants and long-term debt. And more bad news, the retirement contributions have increased from eleven point four one to twelve point one by the directive of the retirement board, you have no choice. That added two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars in expenditure. And of course, we have a four hundred thousand dollar salary adjustment program, which we will be discussing in more detail with you, that's in the base budget. Jackham Yet improvements. You will recall that rather than go into debt, you loaned the recreation project, the money roughly four million dollars to build it. We are in the first year of repaying that. Likewise, the recreation property, you fronted the money, and we discussed how that will be repaid. But I will also say this, even though the recreation money eventually will come, as we've put together the budget on the four cent fund, we are taking money out of the four cent fund to repay the general fund this year as year one for Jackham Yet, and this year is year one, year one for the recreation land. Because if some of those sales fall through, you have to have a sound business plan. So over the next several years, you will see that in the general fund, the capital improvement programs are few and far between. Why? Because when we ask you to fund those two major expenditures, we said to you and you agreed that that money would be repaid from the four cent fund over a five-year period. And that's the pledge we made, that's what you're seeing in the budget. And of course, the last assumption is always, you decide what cost of living adjustments. Well, I said that was the last, but we, we have covered those two things that we just mentioned a moment ago. Now, you've been very kind for an hour, but you've been sitting on the edge of your seat for Ms. Maids. So without further ado, here's the grandmother extraordinaire, Gail Maids, revenue projections.
Good evening, Mayor Council. We're gonna take a quick look, I promise I won't hold you too long. This is a very high-level look at what we're looking at in the budget this year. The general fund revenues, as we talked about in the assumptions, we budgeted the abhorrent taxes at exactly the same number as last year, our full year estimate is very close to that. Any adjustments we make, we can make based on decisions made by the council. The sales tax, we've seen incredible growth, we're budgeting a little excess sales tax. Just remind you that the sales tax is based on what everybody in the county, the decisions they make on their tax rate. So we really don't know. For twenty-three, the first eight months, we know what we'll get, what percentage, but the distribution changes in June, which is four months of the upcoming year, and the decisions that are made today affect F Y twenty-four. And when we get F Y twenty-four, there's nothing we can do to change those outcomes for the sales tax distribution, just so to remind everybody that, that's, that's a sticky wicket there. And the unrestricted intergovernmental revenues, uh, those are very close to what we budgeted in F Y twenty-two. Restricted, very close.
Would you remind them of the difference between unrestricted and restricted? I know one's restricted and the other's unrestricted.
Um, unrestricted are like the A B C tax, the things that are distributed by the state, that there's no restriction on how we spend it. The restricted intergovernmental are things like Powell Bill that we have to spend on street paving. The charges for services are down a little bit from prior year budget, and the appropriate fund balance here is four point seven, that's what's in the proposed budget right now. It looks like it's a lot less, but when we adopted the budget in twenty-two, it was five point four million. It went up significantly because we rolled, well, we rolled encumbrances over for all the vehicles that we could not get, you know, we've not been able to buy vehicles, so we're still waiting on some vehicles that we ordered in F Y twenty-one are still not here. So as that rolls over, that's part of the fund balance, that was one point four million dollars, part of it was the fire truck, the biggest part, but, um, the, the other vehicles are not here either, so.
And then, yeah, am I correct or incorrect? The three point five or so million for the purchase or the work at Jackham Yet?
I think that was in F Y twenty-one, but the recreation property was two and a half million dollars of that money too, so, those are the things that. And then just a real high level, these are the total expenditures for the operating funds. As you can see, most of them are down, solid waste is up just a little bit, um, and stormwater is up, and that one is a, about a half a million dollar capital project, I believe, just the change from last year.
Is that the twenty million dollars from the state included in that water and sewer fund?
No, this is just the operating, this is not the capital projects. And then we've got a history here of what the fund balance was, the, you've got the year, and then what was appropriated when we, um, adopted the budget, and then what we, what our actual results were. You can see we added three million for the first three years, we spent just about a hundred thousand dollars last year, and this year, full year estimates say we're gonna use five point two. That's a conservative estimate, it probably won't be that much, but that's, that's where we're, we're estimating today. And this is just a look at the tax rate for F Y twenty-two, our tax rate is sixty-four point two cents. We set aside four cents for cap, council initiatives, and five point one five cents goes to pay for the debt service on the Center for Public Safety, and that leaves fifty-five cents for us to spend on general government operations. Listen to.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thomas, are you gonna give the tax neutral presentation?
We, uh, I just did my personal, you know, the one, the one place I stay at.
Well, how, how close am I?
Oh, where, where's your number?
Oh.
Fifty-four point five. No?
Forty point three was mine.
Oh, okay.
Something to do with my house.
Well, we used the, uh, the L G C's worksheet, and we came up with this number of fifty-four point five is that the revenue neutral rate, revenue neutral is a little bit misleading. That would lead, that would increase our revenue by three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. You're allowed to have the natural growth that you've had over the last four years, it backs out any annexation, but then takes into account any.
How much is that, three hundred?
Three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, about that.
About one point.
And then for each one cent, we were produced four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, and F Y twenty-two was three hundred and seventy-four thousand.
And one thing I wanna, I want to mention that is, I suppose, uh, not good news, um, natural growth. We are very fortunate that you're getting ready to see about a thousand homes built. But I want to remind you again, natural growth is basically new development. It is essential that you as a council, as the leaders of this community, take the necessary steps to constantly encourage people to want to live inside the city, and that you make your regulations and your management, because obviously, as you know, I'm not gonna be your management in the future, that you create an environment that encourages people to want to be in the city of Jacksonville. Your natural growth, your natural growth, if it doesn't continue or increase, it is a very daunting task that you're gonna face as the elected officials. Your expenditures will constantly go up, just as you're going to see in your police and fire reports. The salaries that we currently pay across the board are not competitive. So if you're gonna be competitive, that means what, more revenue? If you need more revenue, that means only two ways to get it. One of those ways is through encouraging development. The other way is the way that none of you want, and that's higher taxes. So when you look, that's a very sobering number. Now fortunately, this is natural growth only on property. The thing that has been saving the city for a number of years has been the sales tax. I would encourage you, I would implore you to do everything you can to stay commercial and residential friendly. Because if you don't, you're going to see the sales tax going more and more elsewhere. And I will say what Gail said a minute ago. The distribution formula is going to have to move front and center for us to have serious discussions with the county again. Because as the county population and the county tax base expand, and your population, our population and tax base is not expanding, the numbers work against you, even though you continue and your businesses continue to be the primary source of sales tax generation. Ms. Maids? Ms. Mates?
May I add something? Mr. Warden suggested a letter to the county commissioners about the sales tax. How about all the members of this council sign off on that letter?
We can prepare it tomorrow. Have it for your signature on the fifth.
So, Gail, what was the percentage increase in property values?
I'm gonna get to that in just a minute.
I got the decrease, I'm just gonna say what.
Do we know what the county rate, neutral rate's gonna be?
Not yet, sir.
No, sir.
I talked to Chairman Bright the other day, and he told me that they were just now beginning to work on their budget.
It's probably superficial, but with all the growth on the beach property and so forth, they ought to be sitting pretty.
Here's the next two slides.
Okay, so, and this is just a reminder that the sales tax is distributed within the county on the ad valorem tax revenue, and that tax revenue is the tax value times the tax rate. So this is the values in Onslow County, the old value and the estimated new value. There are still chance for challenges to the value, so these are just the estimates at this point, and they're in thousands. So the county grew 28.7% as a whole, the city 19.6. And then, as you said, the places at the beach, Holly Ridge 50%, Surf City 64%. Now, this is the value.
Yeah, let's spend a minute talking about that. Onslow County's growth was a combination of the increased value of existing properties, but also significant new properties. The values in Jacksonville were the increased market value of existing, very little new. That's, once again, very sobering. Richlands had a combination, Swansboro, I really don't know, Holly Ridge, tremendous new growth. Surf City and North Topsoil, probably more market-driven than new-driven. Please.
And so, this is my estimate of what their tax revenue would be for all of the locations in the county, based on the rate that they have today, assuming that nobody changes their
And so the way you read that is that you've got the new value, which is for the county 19 billion, for the city 4 billion, the tax rate, and then the revenue. And remember, the 28 million for the city is the same as after reval.
That's using the same tax rate we have today, the 64.2. So if nobody changed their tax rate, this is the tax revenue. And then that carries to the next slide, where we have the estimated revenue, and the percent of revenue would be the percent of sales tax compared to what the current percent of sales tax is. I kinda had to split it between two slides to make it so it was...
The percentage of sales tax revenue is gonna go down.
And, and the only assumption I can make is that nobody changes their rate. I don't know that that's a good assumption.
But a change could mean all the difference.
It could mean...
Up or down, right?
Up or down, that's correct. And what we do compared to what everybody else has. So are we having fun now? All right.
Real quickly to close this out, here are the recommendations, obviously, just, we're not asking you to accept, adopt anything, just acknowledge your revenue neutral rate is .545. That's gonna give you an increase of 359,000 natural growth. Make no decisions at this point regarding tax rate. Capital project funded at 1.4 million. Remember, sales tax distribution is impacted by the tax levy of others, so we have an if-then. If the county increases their tax levy and the city does not, then the city loses, is that spelled right? I think it's spelled loses. Anyway, loses sales tax in FY '24 and beyond. Remember the challenge of paving. Remember, revaluation occurs only every four years. Remember, revaluation, property tax, revenue, budgeting are all very complex, and they're all tied together. And remember, property tax levy impacts your sales tax distribution. We will begin next week with the presentation of your water and sewer rate model, and then get into some discussions on the issues facing pollution five. We made a few budget notes to follow up on, we'll get you that information over the next two or three days. You have any questions before we take a break and then go into closed session?
Can we get copies of those slides as well?
Absolutely. Now, if you like paper copies like Mr. Logan, so so wants.
They're trying to save money. Yeah, it'd be cheaper as well.
But, no, seriously, we will send those to you by email, but I also know, on some of these things, you may actually want paper copies. So anybody who wants paper copies, just see Rose before you leave tonight and say, get me that in my mailbox on paper. Well, let's just ask, anybody who wants paper, raise their hand. Okay?
Other question, not related to the budget, but there's no more budget questions. Update on New River, what's, what's happening with that? Have we heard whether the due diligence period is over and they closed, or fallen through it, or what?
On New River Apartments, the, we were originally told that the company that was buying it would be closing no later than the end of March. We've now been told that that has been extended indefinitely. We've also been told that the general contractor that our building department and planning department spent literally days and days and days with, and thought we had a handle, or at least an agreement on what they would be doing, that for whatever reason, that general contractor has now said, this project isn't for me. So the, the good news is that we have about 145 units out of the roughly 694 units that were occupied, we're down to about 145 units occupied. The other good news is the vast majority of those units that are occupied are not in the 67 or so that we brought to you and asked for you to require them to be torn down. Your decision to move that to June 30th means that most likely, you're not going to have to address that at this point, because the vast majority of those 67 or so units are in fact vacant. Also, we would extend, you know, and I don't want people to stay in these units after hearing this, because we're down to such a modest number of those 67 units, if we continue to see progress being made on the sale of the property, then we certainly are not going to, to hold that drop-dead date. Now, John, you and Ron have been in this, any of the things I need to correct or addition?
Yes, we have answered two extensive public records requests, one from an attorney and one from the developer, wanting emails, wanting all of Danny's files and reference to the different units in the last 30, 60 days. But again, the property's still in the owner's name, had, had it before, it's not changed ownership, the last time I checked, it was in the last week.
Ron?
Ron just, Ryan just sent me an update. He said the new contractor was on site evaluating last week, and he said that we are still working with them. So there are some of the people we've been working with remained in, in the mix. It's the contractor.
The owner's side has stayed the same, but the contractor they're wanting to use has changed.
Yes, so, but, but they're still interacting with us.
Yeah, the, the group we've been working with, correct me now if I'm wrong, is called Community Development Investment Group, or something very similar to that. That is the group that is tentatively going to be purchasing town center.
And they're still pursuing a renovation rather than a redevelopment.
Oh, it's very clear, they have no intentions to redevelop, that it is, it is a rehabilitation.
A question here, I've been wanting to ask this, and I know we probably have talked about it before, but the $20 million that is coming, or has come to us from Senator Lozara to go towards the sewer project that's supposed to go from Ramsey out to the LTS, is that figured into the rate system or rate model? So that is in the rate model, figured into the rate model. Also, when we took our tour of the LTS out there, you made a statement that some of the hemworks needed to be upsized as far as the pipes, has that been considered in any capital project?
Yes, sir, that was the $2 million, the number that Wally referred, that's the $2 million from that. So both the, both the $9 million from the American Recovery Plan, and the $20 million from Senator Lozara. Now, the $20 million has not yet been secured, but we're in the process. As with everything, the bureaucracy requires, they don't just mail us a check, unfortunately. So what the, the agency at the state has been working with Wally, they have submitted all of the plans, Wally, pick it up there, where are we on that?
We haven't submitted the plans yet.
We haven't submitted because we, because it's broken up into several contracts, we're trying to get at least the, the two segments of the force main submitted at the same time. We literally have everything done, we're just going through and checking to make sure the contract looks good, because we have to submit it to NCD EQ to review, they have to review the, review the, the plans, the contract RFP, but I had to make sure that Davis Bacon is in there. There was certain stipulations that we have to make sure is in there, so. I literally have it, I got it from Wanda today, that both segments to do a final review on before we send it to the engineer to submit it to NCD EQ.
But there are, there are no issues other than just filling everything out, we had to submit the plans, they even have to approve what our manhole covers look like, so. We like the round ones ourselves, but some people say...
Yeah, they're easier to glassware.
They fly farther than the square one.
Mr. Parker?
When are you ready, man?
Are you ready?
Yes, sir. If you want to go in.
Motion closed, go into closed session.
Salute.